This conference will now be recorded.
Linda Stellius? Linda, how do you say your last name? What? Your mic's off.
Dante Yanis.
Okay. Good, alright. Ben Lepley, absent. Sean De Kramer?
Present.
Okay, there's the rule call. So let's start with comments.
This is Stephen Green calling in.
Oh, Stephen!
Welcome.
Hi. My computer just says waiting for the organizer, so I thought I'd better call.
Well, I'm joining by phone and I cannot get the link that's on the PDF to work. Have you guys been able to?
Yeah, I called Nina a little bit after 5:00 and she had me type it in instead of clicking the hyperlink and when I typed it, it worked.
That was my experience exactly.
That's how I got in.
Yes.
Type it in and get the code.
Okay, let me open that PDF. I'd rather do this via webcam. Okay.
I just have a quick question before we move forward. This is Yvette.
Yes, Yvette.
I just want an understanding of the purpose of this meeting. Are we just in final phase at this stage or are we still actually making adjustments to this document?
I think this... Teresa, go ahead and explain what...
Yeah, I'm gonna say we're at the fine tweaks stage, not the major changes stage.
Right.
Thank you.
Great question.
So tonight, we like to have comments, people's thoughts about what we have in front of us and if anything needs to be added. Ben, are you with us?
Yeah, just give me a moment. I'm still trying to get this link to work. Apologize.
The link is confusing. It sort of puts in a little hyphen, but once I got used to that, worked absolutely fine.
Ben, can you hear us?
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
Can we go ahead and start some comments while you're working on your link?
Okay. Alright, thank you. Sorry.
Peter, do you want to start off? I know you had a list.
I have several comments, all of them minor. I would like to compliment staff for accommodating my earlier comments and I think this has got Ben's stamp all over it and I compliment Ben on all his work. So, no, it's just, they're just a few little things that I noticed when I did this final run-through and I'll go through as quickly as I possibly can. Right on page, I'm gonna go page by page. Page 2, we need to add Linda's name to the design review board.
Right.
And in the key, city limits shown, I believe, is broken, but in the key, it's shown as a solid line that needs correcting.
Oh, okay.
Right. These are nitpicking. Just excuse me. Page 4, all the way over on the bottom right-hand side, there's a bullet, "Continue to attract visitors to all buildings Bisbee." Needs to be a period and get rid of the "and."
Gotcha.
Alright. In page 5, I think just the insertion in the penultimate paragraph, which starts mining of copper was Bisbee's beginning and also its present... And then it says, "May not be over yet," as I think we should insert the current owner of the mine, Freeport-McMoRan. Just... And, to be honest, I didn't like, "may have plans to resume its activities once again," but unless anybody else has an issue, I would just gloss it over. The only thing I would also want to add is that there's a lot of text here about the mining and I don't see any mention of the fact that Bisbee is the county seat. And it's the most prominent building in the city is the courthouse. And again, I think that would be worth just mentioning. Something in addition to its commercial roots in mining, Bisbee is the seat of Cochise County. Its most prominent building is the courthouse. And I'm sure Ben could add something to describe it architecturally. I just think it would be, just for completion. If you think that's unnecessary, then again, none of these comments are deal breakers for me, but just suggestions.
Would you be okay if we just struck that paragraph and replaced it with county seat?
Sure, yeah. I just thought a mention of the courthouse, which is, by far and away, the most... And I don't think we did mention it. Maybe we did and I missed it.
That's okay. We can rework that paragraph.
Yeah, as I say, I lean on Ben to give the accurate description of it architecturally.
Okay. I'll confer with Bob Vince, actually. He's, believe it or not, he's much more adept at very specific nuances of that. But yeah.
Yeah, I can take that from the walking tour, Ben, if you're okay with that.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's probably already in there.
There's a good description.
Alright, moving right along, I jump to page 7.
I have a quick question. If you have a comment on a page, can we say what it is while we're there or does everybody get a chance?
Everybody will get a chance.
Okay.
We'll go around.
Okay. I think this, Teresa, there's an indenting problem at the second column. The second column needs pushing back.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
I told you I was picky. On the bottom right-hand corner, item 3, I think it should be, "All buildings about the sixth line down, all buildings, structures and sites."
Yes, it says strikers.
And I didn't know if that was a Ben Lepley architectural term, but I couldn't find it anywhere.
Where is this?
Bottom right, on the last paragraph on page 7.
Says, "All buildings and strikers should be structures."
I think it should be structures. And... Now, I've got some other formatting things, but I'm gonna pass over it. Getting into page 9 on the definitions. Number 1, I think the, just for brevity, I think we ramble on a little bit, a little bit on the definition of clistery. And I would delete the paragraph, "This term derives from, through pierced with windows." For no particular reason, it's not that it's wrong, it's just, it sort of rambles on and I think that it doesn't belong in this document. It just makes it longer. The biggest issue I have, though, is that some of these definitions then pop up elsewhere in the document. Again, if we want to cull the document down, which no, we don't necessarily want to do, we would get rid of some of the repetition. But if anybody else wants to come on that as they go through, that would be fine. If not, it's not that it's wrong, just repetition.
I'd support that. I'd support that, generally speaking, when it comes to those things like architectural definitions. Because really, the more important definitions are things like non-contributing structure and contributing structure.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. And since you, I mean, they're defined elsewhere, we might want to just clear them up way later in the document.
That's a good suggestion.
Alright, so...
Document as well with a glossary section possibly at the end.
Yeah, glossaries are always good at the end. Yeah, it's easy to find, but again, not a deal breaker, but...
Yeah, I think it helps too because a lot of folks are gonna be hunting and pecking through here for what they think they're looking for and they may not go back to the definitions section.
Okay.
So it could be helpful to define it in multiple places.
Okay, whatever. Page 11. Right at the center column, there's a typo. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 line down, retaining its own distinctive character rather than their own. Okay, 12. Page 13. Yeah, philosophically, item 6 on the left-hand column, it says, "Floor plans and exterior elevations are helpful to understand exterior design intent." Typically, I don't think we ever ask for a floor plan. I agree with the, I agree with the statement, though, that I think sometimes if someone's putting in a new window, the floor plan might justify it, so it is a good idea. But we already asked for exterior elevations, so I would delete "and exterior elevations." I would just leave as "floor plans are helpful to understand the exterior design intent." Because it makes it sound like exterior elevations are not mandatory and they really are. Okay. 7, right at the end, it says originals of, it's talking about photographs, "Originals are not accepted." Not sure what that means.
It means you're not gonna get them back when you submitted them, I suppose.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Hardly anybody sends one either, though, so that, we can just strike that.
Don't submit your antique glass plate negatives.
Format. I think that's what it is, so that people are submitting photographs.
The other thing in that section, and on the 7, I was wondering whether it would be better to reformat it so you had item 7, photographs, and then bulletize the various...
Got 2, 1, 2, and 3.
Yeah.
For A, B, and C.
Yeah, just sort of...
Okay.
All together a little better.
Okay, got it.
Alright. Yeah, top of the center column, "New infill." And in fact, this whole thing was "new construction/infill." And I understand the concept of infill, but if it's new construction, it's new construction. Does it have any other relevance, the term infill? You wanna wanna tone it? Not a deal breaker.
Well, I mean, infill, infill is like, I would say it's more of a zoning term where you've got a big lot and, you know,
Right.
You're squeezing in something that maybe zoning-wise wasn't allowed before or maybe you're getting a variance or maybe you're just change, you know, doing that. So I think...
Leave it in.
Kind of playing it safe to leave it in.
I think... Very good.
Depending on your point of view of safe, but from my point of view, infill's a good thing for Bisbee. Old Bisbee, not other neighborhoods.
Alright, moving on, page 14. I think that, top-left, denial. "If preservation or rehabilitation is determined to be feasible and if the structure has been designated as one having specialty..." Okay. Are we on shaky ground putting that first statement in? "Is determined," I wrote down in my scribble, "by whom?" Is that an issue that, I mean, I know in my experience, we've got into this argument, the property in Claussen, of course, was the case in point.
Right.
Is it determined by the board or is it determined by supportive evidence? I don't know. It's, I don't know whether a lawyer ought to look at that or does it matter?
I think it's determined by the board and the evidence can be presented by, you know, the party that's...
Yeah. Should I, I think in which case we should say, "Is determined by the board."
By the board's vote.
Yeah, because otherwise, I think...
Majority vote.
Yeah.
I agree and I believe that that's spelled out in the previous page in section demolition of buildings.
Right. But it might be vague. I mean, it could be interpreted as being the building inspector or whatever. I think it should be written.
Okay, gotcha.
The center column, I've gone as fast as I can. The center column, item 2, "Staff reviews application for completeness within 10 days of submission." Then it goes on, say, "Without interruption of the application process." This sort of defies a timeline, doesn't it? Because if you review it and it's not complete...
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that doesn't work. Let me review all those timelines with Nina and we'll send you an email kind of spelling that out.
Whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. An item 4, it says applicant post signs along the street. In my experience, Joe's always, or the prior building inspector, has always put up the signs. Is this a new, is this a new rule?
I don't believe that it's new. I think it was just a way to assure that the notices actually got up instead of relying on the homeowner. Though I don't know that that's actually a statutory requirement or a requirement.
Okay. I know Joe's always come around and put something on my fence when I've been in there. I didn't know if the owners had always been on me and I was just a delinquent.
I think they have, but I think Joe has done it just to assure that it gets done.
Okay, we don't need to change it. Item 6, I think, I like to think of a board as singular, so I changed "The design review board renders its decision."
Okay.
And you'd be relieved to know that I'm jumping through this. I'm up to page 21. Typo on the right-hand paragraph, fourth line, "'cause roof slopes..."
Yes, yep.
Got that, okay.
Yep.
And... I think the organization is much better than it used to be now, so please. Okay, I'm jumping to page 28. "Accessory structures," and probably too late. We get a lot of applications for carports, but we don't address it. We say garages and pre-manufactured sheds, whatever. There was an application last, the last board meeting, fore-meeting for carport, which we approved and it was a very fine structure. Is there something that we should put in? It's kind of, carports are not historic, they never will be. Well, they will be in 100 years, but is this something we should, should we have a standard for it or not? Does anybody want to weigh in on that?
I think we do need to have a standard for it. The reason for that is I think we're gonna see more of it.
Yeah.
Specifically in the gulch, what's, you know, we're seeing a lot of now is a lot of the empty land that's here is starting to be developed. And I think we need to get something in place as a guideline
Yes.
so that builders and developers know how to proceed forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're not... Yeah. It's seldom the most beautiful structure, but I did think that the one that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago was excellent. But I don't know how we, I don't know what standards we develop to address that unless we was asked Brian Hope to write the standards.
Do we go around and look at Bisbee and look at what's existing and come to a uniform agreement off of what's currently existing?
Yeah.
There's a big difference between a shed and a carport and a garage and a carriage house.
Right.
Garage and a carriage house are the same. Shed and a garage could be the same. And there was one that Brian Hope did next to 16 Claussen that turned out is designed after a shed to match a shed next door, all corrugated metal and wood. And that one turned out really, really nicely, fits in really well. And then, on the flip side, there's that one on OK Street with the bright white garage doors. Even though we don't do color for the DRB, which is a good thing, that thing still just is such an eyesore. So, it's one of the four white garage doors. So, I don't know. That could be a lot of work to develop that.
Yes.
If you guys, if you do research, just a quick thought on portica shares. Portica shares and carports actually were utilized in the early 1900s and attached to many Victorian homes. And so maybe there is some leeway there as this occurred often in the early 1900s. It's not necessarily called a carport, but a portica share. Just a thought.
And another thought is also that we, we're not really here to prescribe specific styles or recreate old styles because that would actually technically go against the whole premise of, you know, national parks. So, I think creating a new standalone, standalone architectural styles for carports and garages might be problematic because elsewhere in the code, it says something should be of its own time or of its own unique style. And I kind of want to allow people to have the creativity to create their own style, whether it's somebody from their own or somebody who has a client. For example, one style that's not historic and you see around Bisbee, especially in the gulch, is kind of this hippie Cobb style, right? Which some people find ugly. I'm not a fan, but I think it does fit in with Bisbee. So, I'm not gonna prevent that style from happening. So, I don't know, I kind of... Maybe it should be more vague that it should just be accessory structures or new structures should have a style of their own and fit in with the neighborhood.
In the...
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, and I agree with Ben. There are a couple of places in the standards where we do say if it's a brand-new structure, then it should be, for want of a better word, sympathetic with what's around it, but it shouldn't imitate necessarily. So, maybe it's not an issue, but just a thought. The other one, which is sort of an extension of that really, is photovoltaics, freestanding or mounted. We don't think we address it at all. Do we want to or is that again?
I think it might be good to have in here. We do have some definitions. Planning and zoning gave us definitions for that. Might be good to have it in the guidelines so that people can't say, "Well, I didn't see that and it wasn't in there." Same with the murals. There's nothing in here about murals. And we do have some definitions about murals. I think it should be in the guidelines.
Frank, you're hitting on some of the points that I'm after as well. Further, Ben's comment a minute ago, on the garage doors, and we do specifically have, under the doors section, garage doors are listed. I think one of the things that we do need to set some parameters there is a type of style and not necessarily, not the bright white garage doors that you can... That's not the Bisbee style. Maybe there's a way we can guide people into looking at a style that they wouldn't necessarily look at.
I think it's in there, Sean, actually. In the guidelines, there are some pictures of garage doors and styles. I saw them in there today. It's on page 20.
Yeah, we've got one example there.
Right.
Do we go to the extent that we say aluminum garage, you know, garage doors are not acceptable? Really kind of exclude what's not acceptable so that when we do get something, we're actually... We're actually basing a decision on something that's a little bit more accurate in what we're after.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, let's let Peter finish his... Well, I tell you what, let's let Peter finish his, I mean, we'll, we'll come back.
I'm almost done, Frank. Um, just going on to section, uh, chapter four on page thirty-one. It was an awful lot about water harvesting equipment, um, which since it's buried, um, why do we have so much about it in our, in our, in our, um, standards, you know? I would, I don't know whether we want to get rid of it all, uh, other than to say water harvesting equipment should be buried um, wherever possible.
Well.
Which goes down to, you know, the, after the rest of it. I don't know, just a thought.
May, maybe it's, I think the intent there is to get people thinking about ways, affordable ways of, of harvesting water without it being unsightly because um, the cheapest tanks are plastic, above-ground plastic tanks.
Yeah.
And those are, cheap would be less than a dollar a gallon. Expensive is more than a dollar a gallon and those are going to be the steel ones. Um, or wood or something like that. So I think maybe we're trying to prevent people from, um, having these, these ugly bright blue or green or white plastic water harvesting tanks, but at the same time, we don't want to go against being sustainable. So I, I think it's just like a hint. And then elsewhere, in the old code, right here, when I had that page, uh, sorry, yeah, right there, it actually says that we're allowed to do, uh, wood or metal barrels and then we exclude, or concrete, but we exclude bright plastic and then it lists some other stuff. And I, I think that is actually really helpful. It's similar to that garage door conversation we almost started. Um, you know, uh, I, I kinda like that old one. It's on page twenty-nine of the old uh, code. So that's just my two cents on, on that.
Okay.
So, you know, it, it doesn't say anything that's particularly wrong. I just thought it was a little long-winded, but, um, I have no objection to it being in. I'll defer to the rest of the, the group. And then, um, flipping over to page thirty-three, um, this is where we got a little bit of repetition. Uh, E, uh, is repeated. The first, uh, paragraph under E roofing, um, it repeats on page twenty-nine. Doesn't say anything wrong. It just repeats. If we are interested in doing a little bit of, um, pruning, then that sort of thing I would take out, but, um, I think that's, yeah, I think that's all.
Is one commercial, one
What was that, Sean? Can you repeat that?
Is the premise behind the, the duplication of that, um, paragraph, is it one's residential, one's commercial?
Possible.
That is in the commercial, non-residential area.
Yeah, that, yeah, they're both in the, in the, in the, in the commercial section. But it doesn't matter. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't say anything different, so, um, we can gloss over it.
Okay.
All right, that's all I had, Frank. Thank you.
That's it. Well, thank you, Peter. Uh, who would like to go next with comments? John?
Sure. Um, one of my, uh, one of my biggest issues with the document, I talked to Teresa earlier today about it, was spacing. Um, on some, on some of the words, we have four spaces, uh, between the words. On some, we have two. Um, if the spacing could be fixed, um, that would be a huge, uh, a huge help. Um, let's see.
Yeah, I did talk to Nina and she thought that would be fine, Sean. She can handle that.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that looks like a super easy change. It's just changing the auto, automatic.
Yeah, Nina can fix it for us.
Um, one of my, and, and somebody could correct me if I'm wrong on here. Um, when I looked at the old DRB guidelines, I was going through here, the section, the page that Ben just pointed out, um, with the
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, twenty-nine. Um, I did not see solar in the new, in the new DRB guidelines. Um, I didn't see anything about satellite dishes. Um, and I also did not see um, the other one was, I didn't, uh, under the sign section, um, in the old guidelines on twenty-eight, we had some examples of acceptable letter styles, et cetera. Um, the new signs does not have that. Um, what we have is a sample, you know, hanging style sign, but and I didn't know if we wanted to omit that, if it's something that everybody's okay with, but I thought I would bring that.
I think in the past, lettering has been a controversy because we had different styles listed in the previous guidelines. Uh, do we want to continue with that or just go case by case? What do people think about that?
I, I really like that black and white image of the super messy, uh, brewery gulch from like nineteen-ten.
Oh, yeah.
I, I like that it's messy, but I also like that it's, uh,
Yeah.
There's actually so many different fonts and
Right.
It's, it's almost like for a graphic designer, I mean, just looking at that, you already have like ten different, uh, design ideas. It would be great just to have this, uh,
You know?
In the new
We could also reference Doug Dunn's book.
Doug Dunn's book, yeah.
Yeah. Um, in, in regard to solar, um, I mean, we still get that before us, so I, shouldn't we have, um, a section that basically kind of gives a quick outline of what we're looking for?
Yes, I, I think we should. I think it should give the, you know, the angles and the heights and all that stuff that we've got somewhere that's been approved by the city.
Okay.
Let's see if we can get that up, get that in there.
We can find that. I did see public, public art is in here somewhere, but then we flipped past it.
Yeah, it's in there, but it doesn't say anything about murals. And that's
But doesn't, wow.
We do
We can, do you want to put the word mural in there?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What, uh, was brought before city council and approved, um, you know, what our guidelines are about that.
Okay.
Because the murals are, you know, they've been an issue.
Okay, we'll add that in there. Okay.
I'm thumbing through here real quick. Um, on page nineteen, uh, it says acceptable fence type examples. Um, it says fences that are discouraged and generally unacceptable are brightly colored fences, decorative concrete, concrete block cyclone or chain link fencing. Um, and then in the paragraph below, it, it explains that cyclone or chain link fencing will not be approved for front yards, but in some cases that it may be approved for backyard. Um, in the first sentence where it says fences that are discouraged and generally unacceptable, um, I would like to see this a little bit more defined, um, and a little bit more directed. Instead of, um, a simple fences that are not accepted are brightly colored plastic fences, decorative concrete block cyclone or chain link fencing. And then the other paragraph more be, uh, kind of a, the exclusion for chain link fencing.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
On page, uh, twenty-two.
Um, Sean, would you go back? I'm not sure I followed you on nineteen. So,
Um,
tell me again.
It says we're fences that are discouraged and generally unacceptable.
Yeah.
If everybody agrees, uh, fences that are not acceptable are brightly colored plastic fences, decorative concrete, finely cyclone or fencing. And then with an exclusion basically down below in the following paragraph where cyclone or chain link fencing, um, will not be approved for front yards, but in some cases it can be approved for a backyard.
You want to leave that in?
Does everybody agree?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. If it's the right situation, whereas the backyard abutting somebody else and they don't want to see a chain link.
Okay.
I had, I had made a comment, uh, back in June, I think, or maybe March, uh, about the decorative. I don't know. I'm, I'll, I'll pick this up later.
Okay.
Um, the other
Sorry, Sean, I'm ready now.
No, it's okay. Um, it's, it's a discussion. Um, the other thing that I would like, that I have a question with all of you about is artistic expression fencing. And I know that that comes up before us. Case in point, we just had it two weeks ago. Um, you know, it, we, we allow solid with, a solid board fencing. Um, we allow picket fencing. On artistic expression fencing, we've often approved it in the past just because it's an artistic nature. But it doesn't necessarily go with the guidelines that we've set forth in the, in, in, in the design review board guidelines.
You're right. I mean, we do have, I mean, there's, Shawnee Hicks came before us with a, a very artistic fence. Um, there's a fence down there on, um, oh, just below us on Lachlan, I guess it is, that, uh, Frank Timbora did. That's, it looks good. I, I think Bisbee's an eclectic town. I think there's a place for that type of fencing. It's not, you know, um, necessarily, it's not Victorian, which is, but you know, it's, it's, uh, got the flavor of Bisbee. I, so I, I think, again, we could take that stuff case by case. Um, these shown in the guidelines are just kind of basic fences, but you know, like up, like up at Peter's house, you've got all that sculpture that's all around it. I mean, that's, that's different. It's, it's great. So
That's a Bendale.
Stuff.
I, I think the city would be poorer without a lot of Bendale's work.
Oh, absolutely.
And a, a, much of it is a fence. Um, so it, maybe, maybe we address it by having a, just, um, a paragraph in the, to the effect that the DRB is receptive to appropriate artistic, um, fencing or, uh, uh, to, um, um, I'd have to think about the wording, but something to the, some, you know, if, if this is, I mean, as, as Frank mentioned, the, um, the one that Sean Hicks did, I mean, that was a work of art and I don't think any of us would, um, want not to have those sort of things popping up every once in a while. They're separate from the house. They don't impact the house. Um, so I, I would, if we could just say that we are receptive to, um, if you like, works of art in lieu of a standard fence design, um, uh, and let it go at that.
Right. And then there's another genre of fence. I don't know if it's necessarily sculptural, but, uh, it's very common and it's a found object fence. So up by Castle Rock, there's somebody with a car door as a fence. Uh, there's actually not, there's like two or three of those, as their gate, they use car doors. There is up by Central School, there is somebody with, uh, uh, bedpost fence. Um, and I have a bedpost fence as well. Um, and then up on High Street, there's somebody with, uh, found object, random rusty found object fence, which is actually quite beautiful up by Noah's, Noah's Subi's place. And then, um, then there's somebody on Opera. On their retaining wall, they've put in all of these glass, colored glass objects into the masonry of, of the retaining wall. It's just, just stunning. Maybe that one's more art, but it's also found object. So I, I think that that could be, uh, uh, listed. Um, or antique fence. And then there, I think it was the house that burned down near the courthouse had a fence made out of all plumbing, steel plumbing, and that was a really cool fence. So, uh, but that's also really susceptible to judgment of people thinking it's junk or, you know, it's like, looks like Bear's, Bear's, Bear's old house up on the gulf. I don't know if anyone remembers that, but uh, he had, he had a fence made out of mattresses, rusty mattresses, uh, mattress springs, so, um.
Well, it's gotta be case by case, and I think there's a definitely room for that stuff in Bisbee. It adds flavor to the town and it's a, you know, it's a tradition.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with you guys on that. Um, my only concern on it is when we go to the point of privacy and solid, solid metal fencing, as we did last, uh, two weeks ago, that's where my concern is. Uh, you know, the artistic fence, like, you know, it's great. It, it's, it makes Bisbee Bisbee, but when we start doing privacy fences and blackout fences, uh, you know, you, you, you go down a, a road that is departing from
Right. Hmm, I agree. Uh, again, uh, we work constantly case by case because the town is such an eclectic, Old Bisbee is such an eclectic place. Um, so we just, and I look at this document as a living document in the sense that it's going to be constantly, you know, reviewed and talked about, and that's one of our jobs as board members, is to constantly be thinking about this stuff and trying to come to some kind of consensus between ourselves, what direction we're going. And I think, uh, we got a good group here and we're doing, doing a good job with it, I feel. So
Yep.
Anyway, Sean, you get more?
Yeah, moving on, page twenty-two. Um, we had talked about this, uh, a couple of meetings ago. Um, undesirable aluminum slider windows. And you wanted to put something in there to the effect of slider windows are not acceptable except in, uh, Ben's exact words, mid-century modern.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Um,
I totally, yeah, obviously support that. Or contemporary, like
Right.
I think if it goes with, with, if it's integral to the, the house, if it's a new construction that's being proposed, um, maybe they don't want any frames at all, just piece of glass. Can look nice.
Um, page twenty-three, um, section E, uh, second, uh, second sentence. It says a variety of treatments may appropriate.
Oh, be appropriate. Yeah, okay. Gotcha.
Um, page twenty-four, um, I thought it's, uh, on the left-hand side, bottom, uh, bottom paragraph. It says, "Another alternative to railboards and battens is five-eighths inch exterior plywood, which may be used with, um, three-inch battens spaced twelve inches on center. Plywood siding or flagstone wingscoats will not be accepted."
Yeah, that's kind of confusing.
Oh, maybe it should say bare, bare plywood.
Yeah.
Like with, without battens.
That's a little contradictory and a little confusing.
Without battens, okay.
We don't like T-111, is that right?
T-111 is, is not acceptable. There was a place on Tombstone Canyon that, oh, what's his name, put T-111, we had to put battens over the, over the.
Yeah, okay.
Clean that up.
Page twenty-seven, we just had, it, it's under railings, porch decks and railings. The style that is in, on the left-hand page, we've got the three examples of different railings and one that's not allowed. The second one, I'm almost wondering if we shouldn't remove that photo, simply for the fact that if someone's gonna do that on a railing and we're gonna run into the same issues as the applicant that we.
Right.
Really, can we remove that from railing?
If that's, if it's above eighteen inch, an eighteen inch drop, I think it is.
Yeah, or define it to where we can say, you know, if it's above this, you know, this much of a drop, this can use, if it's ground level, then of course it can be used, it's not a, it's not an issue. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask Joe maybe for a little caption to go under that one.
Okay. Let's see. Peter picked up on some of the things that I had highlighted, so I'm going through here real fast to make sure. Ben, do you want to talk about the one section under page thirteen? Demolition or movement of historic buildings? The first section, number B.
Yeah, I've got a whole list, I can, I can go, but, sure.
When we, why don't we do that when we get to Ben and then you can talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay. To jump back to page thirteen real quick, it says, "For application approval, the applicant must show that preserving the building is not physically and or economically feasible." Can we get a little bit more distinct with that, to say that it's verbal, a verbal, that there needs to be actual documents submitted showing that? Because I don't want to see another sixteen clause in our twenty-minute debate on whether it's feasible or not feasible.
We used to have, if you look at the old language of that one page four, I gotta find what page that was in the old one. It says something like contractors, engineers, or architects' opinions of whether it's feasible or not, and actually, that, in that case, that kind of worked both ways, because for that, that house, we had contractors saying both, it was feasible and it wasn't feasible. So.
Higher conversation ever had anything before us in a document that said it was feasible or not feasible, we never saw.
Absolutely right, yep. Yeah, you are absolutely right.
And I think one of the things that we've got a chance here to do is to take some of the problems that we've had, and I don't know if you can really call them problems, but some of the experiences that we've had, and we can take those and modify them now to prevent further complications.
I, I also think that, you know, certainly, the, the term commercially feasible should be in the, you know, whether you, if someone elects to do it themselves, then arguably, you know, it's, maybe it's feasible, but not everybody is handy with a hammer. And I'll think we should take that approach, if you do it yourself, it's still a cost, it's costing your time. So, you know, I think if we make it commercially feasible, it cleans it up a little bit. It stops someone saying, "Well, I can do it," you know, "for, for nothing." Well, that, that's, I don't think that's a good argument.
Where is that, where is that, Sean?
That's on page thirteen, let's see, the last end of the first paragraph.
Okay. Oh, okay. And we want to change that to commercially feasible?
No, well, Sean's suggestion, which I agree with, I mean, it's up for debate, so, is, is having a written, a written document that says, you know, what, what, what the cost of change would be, but, I don't know, I think, I almost feel we should just kind of leave it as it's written because it's kind of a lot of different opinions on that.
I agree with you, Ben, because if we make it too specific, then it's easy to get around, whereas if it's broad enough, we can say, "Well, in this case, this is what the board thinks," and it's not actually written specifically that situation. So I think it should stay as it is, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna take the first couple sentences of that section, though, to legal, because if you read it verbatim, it says that the design review board must approve all demolition applications.
Yeah, well, that's not right.
Yeah, that's kind of.
So I will take that to legal for some help.
There's also the issue of demolition by neglect. I don't know if we can really address anything in there about that, but, that we've run into that before.
We have a whole new committee, we have a whole new committee that, that essentially, what's the name of the committee, Teresa, that?
Building Maintenance Board of Appeal.
Maybe we should, yeah, Building Maintenance reference that when we mention demolition by neglect. Because they might have more teeth than that man, than that matter.
Well, that's good, I wasn't aware of that group.
That formed a year ago, nine months ago, like that.
Great.
Yeah.
And I, I think the premise of that group was because Joe Ward was so bogged down with people not mowing their lawns, you know, actually, I'm not sure, Teresa probably has more backstory.
Yeah, well, there, there was a, there was an individual who, their home was deemed to be unsafe unless they could provide a structural engineering report, and they wanted to appeal without getting a structural engineering report. Was that, okay, I made it, I made a note about demolition by neglect.
Sean, you got some more?
No, I'm good.
You're done? Who wants to go next? Yvette, if you've got any?
This is Yvette, yes, I'd love to go next. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so I have, I think about ten items on my list, some are very small mentions, so I'll go through those first, and then the other ones are, are more regarding the document being user-friendly, or big picture items, and of course, understanding that perhaps none of this can be changed, these are all just suggestions. So the first one is the cover, I think it's great, it's really a much better photo than was there before, if you remember the old photo. I still think we could have an even better photo now that Tombstone Canyon has been paved, featuring maybe the post office or something on Main Street, as opposed to the gulch, only because I feel in our current times, the gulch is a very neglected location in terms of the businesses there, I know they have a lot of contributing structures, but it's kind of like, treated a little bit like the stepchild, and so I don't know if that is the main photo that we want to place on the cover, unless we plan to maybe do some other improvements in the gulch from the city, you know, direction. So, those are thoughts on the first page.
Sean, Sean's making faces.
Page two. Page two, just questioning, you know, I think Peter mentioned this earlier, the design review board, the names that are listed there, also the mayor and city council with that, some of that possibly changing by the time this is printed, just thinking about, are we creating an addition or a volume? And so maybe if we're gonna keep those names as listed, perhaps we can create something on the front page, or on page two that says, "This is addition number or volume," so that we know moving forward, if it's recreated next year or in years to come, that it would be another addition or another volume with, with different names listed, as those are likely to change in the coming years.
I think, I think we should just go ahead and acknowledge the date that this is adopted, because any changes that are made in the future have to go back through planning commission and back to council, so it could be cumbersome to change them every time there's a change.
There's a date of adoption in the bottom right-hand corner of the page.
Yeah, okay.
Page three.
Ah, okay.
Okay.
Oh, option, perfect. Fabulous. Thank you for that, because that, that was obvious. Okay, and then I think the only other small issue I had is on page four. Under document intent, I noticed the bullet points are pretty much the same as previous documents when you get to the center column and, and the second and third column, it looks like the order has been changed. Personal perspective, I think the prior order was better. I think to list, offer developers and property owners, which is bullet point four, as a fourth reason for this document, is best moved up a couple of bullet points. Bullet number three, provide the design review board that a reference tool for consistently and fairly reviewing design proposals would be better than, you know, to list a reference tool for the design review board, these might be things that can't be changed. Bullet point number four, offer developers and property owners a framework, I'm not so sure this is a framework, I think it's a set of standards or a guide. So just some, some, I guess, use of different verbiage there, could be maybe a little bit attractive. And I, I don't know if this document educates visitors, I don't know that visitors would be getting hold of the document, maybe they will. And I'm not exactly sure how it stream, streamlines the process, so that all might be, you know, questionable. Don't feel that the document attracts visitors' old busy, again, not knowing how this is gonna be distributed, it's just that visitors will really see and it's not really attracting visitors. So I just have, I just have some questions about those bullet points, but those bullet points have been there, and in, in the prior document.
Okay.
Then, my, my user-friendly, big-picture items would be, including a closing page, I noticed that at the very end, currently, we still end at lighting, the last thing that we read about is a sentence about lighting, there isn't a closing page. Glossary would be very helpful so that there's a, a section at the back that people could go to very quickly to look up some information, as, as opposed to trying to pick through the document to find that information. An appendix would be very helpful, so that if I was using this document and I'm trying to find out something about a garage or a wings coating, or whatever the case may be, I could quickly go to an appendix to find out which page I need to go to, to, to look up that item that pertains to me. I noticed that we talk about, I think it's maybe page fifteen, let me just flip through here really quickly. We kind of mentioned what will not be accepted, and so my suggestions there are twofold. We have a violations process, many of us in the community have received violations, I think it's really important for people to understand, they may receive a violation, what the violation means and what the penalties are for violations, so possibly a process, what to expect, and even a fee schedule. And the last, the last page I would include would be a resource page. Again, as, as a person who has had to make changes with my home, I used to be able to call Dan Oldfield and he would tell me who the person was to call about what item, I've called Ben before about glass, and so I think it would be really nice to have a resource page where people could possibly go to local vendors to find out who can help them, if there are issues pertaining to grass, who are the local engineers, who are our local architects, who are our local roofers? Where do you get gravel? Where, where do I purchase windows, or who has historic windows? So a resource page would be very helpful. Possibly a grid, we've seen in the document, there's certain things that are accepted or not accepted. So it would be really nice to have a quick reference guide that says typically accepted or typically not accepted items that have, you know, in the past, not been accepted or are largely accepted. My last comment is formatting, I do not like the formatting, I don't like the three columns that are here, I, I feel that it's a complicated document, it's not easy to flip through and follow. It might be better once it's printed, but most guidebooks and reference books are portrait style, and they read page side, side to side, and I, I realize that, that that might not be changeable, however, we haven't gone to print yet. And so I feel that if there was a, a better format that was a little more user-friendly, both to the board members and the public, that is a portrait-style book with chapters outlined and portrait-style reading, it might be a little bit easier on the user.
The, the old one.
May be an expense for that, for us to have it reformatted.
Got it.
Yeah.
I figure there's reasons for everything, of course.
Yeah, I can, I can check around and see what the cost to reformat it would be.
Yeah, here's the old one, was eleven by seventeen, split down the middle.
Right.
With two columns.
Yeah.
But if there's a graphic design fee, then.
Yeah, I'll check, I will check into it, I don't have any problem checking to see what the cost would be to have the document reformatted. And then the only, you know, problem with the resource page is that it could change, and the document has to go to planning commission and then back to council in order to be updated.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just have one comment. I like the idea of the violation process with fee schedules on that, because sometimes people don't really know what they can or cannot do when replacing, let's say, a door, a window. I don't like the idea of placing vendors and roofers on there, because then we're endorsing something that, I mean, here.
we're endorsing something that, I mean, here in Bisbee, it's hit and miss. And I just think that's a dangerous place to go.
I think you're right. Yvette, have you got any more comments?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you for listening to my rapid download.
I think, I think to Linda's point, I would agree, it also might not be legal, because the profit incentives.
For the city to endorse, it's like we're endorsing something.
No, it saves, it saves the, the home, some homeowners, it would save an immense amount. But maybe, maybe when they're talking to Teresa, she can just list off names. I'll give you that.
Linda, you want to go ahead with comments?
Sure. On page five, on the first and second paragraphs, I'm just thinking that this could be a potentially offensive comment, but instead of saying Indians, can we say It's on the first line, there are those who say that the Indians and Spaniards. Can't we just say Americans, because Indians isn't used anymore, because we have East Indians?
Right.
Let me, let me check, though, because the native tribes may not use Native American.
Okay, if you can just check.
You know what I'm saying?
Whomever.
Right.
That would be great.
Okay.
I would, yeah, Apaches, maybe. That's the, the local.
Okay.
They were here, right?
Okay.
We're in Apache land. There's Apache pottery under my house, so.
And maybe then we'll take out occupation, like habitation instead of occupation, or something.
There you go.
Okay. Okay.
Then on page eleven, this is a typo on item number five, in the middle bottom section. It says, this optional meeting. Just take out the D, because later on it says during this optional pre-settle meeting. So just cross out the D. Okay, then on page fourteen, in the middle section, it says in case that involved any of the above considerations, right after D, that paragraph, it says, receive no less thirty day, thirty calendar days. It's no less than thirty calendar days.
Oh, yes. Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, so on page nineteen, with the fences, this picket and half-picket, I know Joe's not going to like that, because if we're using two-by-twos, that's a six-inch opening. And what were we allowed, only a four-inch opening?
Four, yeah.
So picket and half-picket, I see that as a potential problem.
So that's another one where we, I can have him, like, specify the maximum distance between the ground and the...
The width of the spacing between the pickets has to be four.
Right.
Yeah, because that could be totally fine for, for yard.
If it's on the ground, but it wouldn't be fine for a railing that was eighteen inches off the ground.
Correct.
Right, yeah. So we'll put a no vendor there. Okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to...
No, no worries.
Over everybody else's. Okay, on page twenty-six, on that far right, it's another fence, same thing. Because I know that vertical one is going to be a problem, where you see the, you see two, yeah, two horizontal pieces, on one side, where there's just a single horizontal, that's not going to be fine.
Right.
Okay.
Well, maybe one of these sections should be more like elevated porches, in which that X one shouldn't be there. Maybe that X one should be moved to where the fences are, you know, because porches are more likely to be raised. I don't know.
Yeah, let me check with Joe. I can check with Joe on that.
And that was, that was it for me.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Actually, I was going to have her go back. I think I'm, I'm saying, when you were on number five, on page eleven, I think I missed something.
Okay.
Will become, okay, optional priest of during, oh, the, got you. Okay, got it.
It says during the this.
Yes, gotcha. Okay, I just had to look at it again. Great, thank you.
Stephen?
Okay, now mine's a really long one. I found one typo that no one else spotted, that's it. And it's on page five, page five, column three, second paragraph down, floodwaters racing, thorn should be down.
Okay.
Floodwaters racing down.
Down, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
That's it. Everyone else picked up everything else from me.
I must say, that is a hot topic these days, but okay.
All right, Ben, you're up.
Okay, so I don't have much. I do have the page, my notes. Start at the back. I'm, I'm the guy that reads magazines backwards. So when we're talking about architectural styles, on page twenty-two.
Oh, I was way back.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I would say, it's, it's not going to be very common, we're going to get anyone doing an A-frame anymore. And in fact, if they did do them now, they might not look as bad as they did in the nineteen seventies.
Actually, we just told, we just told a fellow, no, but he could not build an A-frame in Old Bisbee.
Okay. I, I don't know, I, I would have to disagree with you on that one. I would say there's probably, there's, there's probably things that are going to be more, that are going to sneak through the cracks that people would be more offended about. And that would be your typical, I would call them stucco tract homes, that you would see, like KB Homes, or somebody else built, where it's just blank stucco elevation, generic Spanish Revival, aesthetic, or American Contemporary Spanish Revival. I don't even know what they call themselves these days. Because I'm not an architect that does that sort of work, but maybe I should hunt down exactly what that terminology is. But basically, generic tract home, and I could even submit an illustration of what that looks like, so that you can have copyright of that illustration. And then the other thing is, we're probably going to see a lot more of these now, is these kind of prefabricated homes, almost like a trailer, but not quite a trailer, where they just build the wall panels, and it's basically something that you buy pre-made, and they just stick them up. And they essentially look like trailers at the end of the day. And, you know, every time I leave Bisbee, going towards the tunnel on that exit, we've got that gray trailer with bars on the windows. That's what I'm talking about. I mean, that's an actual trailer. I don't know how it got there. It's probably got there in the seventies, before the DRB existed, but, or it's outside of city limits or something. But that's more what I'm worried about, and I think, basically, getting some illustrations of these super bland, super cheap constructions, I think would be, basically would hit a lot more boards, and all of us would be offended by, than an A-frame.
Okay.
That's just my thought. I don't know if anyone else had comments on that, but...
So, in this section, based on what you were saying, are you looking for a greater definition?
I think he's, yeah, just wanting to substitute, like, we don't want one of these.
Right, I completely agree.
Okay.
I'm, I'm kind of picking winners and losers here, to be honest, of, of the architectural styles, but I'm an architect, so that's what I do.
Right. I mean, really, for that matter, how, how often are we going to get a Mansour Roof application, too, so we could just substitute the tract home and the manufactured home in there, or something?
Yeah.
I don't think Spanish Revival would be a good one, because the Brophy House in Vista, on Vista Park, that's Spanish Revival. So that seven thousand square foot home. And that was built way at the beginning by, you know, the, the owners of the Mercantile Company.
Right.
And it was designed by an architect, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, and there, there is one on just south, just east of the Circle K, Stucco Spanish Revival. But that's also historic. So maybe we don't call it that, call it typical tract home design, contemporary American tract home design, and then I can do an Adobe Live Trace illustration of a KB home, or something.
Right.
Right. Moving on.
Yeah, so page nineteen, I, I made a note back six months ago, about the decorative block, the decorative concrete. I do want to mention that there are a number of historic architects that have done that, namely Frank Lloyd Wright and Josiah Jostler, both who built a lot in Arizona around nineteen twenties, thirties, forties, and fifties, that use extensively decorative concrete blocks. And I think there's a lot of architects now that do use those, I don't. I might at some point, but I, I think having that in there is, I don't think it's a threat anymore, because you can't even really buy those, what's illustrated in that photograph. Those aren't even for sale, so I think just removing that.
Okay.
Might be a good idea.
Okay.
Because the, the things that aren't for sale, the modern equivalent, I think are a lot more beautiful and thoughtfully done.
Okay.
Or artisanal. I don't know, does anyone else have an opinion on that, or?
I think you're right. We don't want to exclude all options.
No, but what options?
Well, again, we're case by case, when it comes up, we'll know whether we like it or not, right?
Right.
Exactly.
On the section, it also says that if you put block fence, that it has, it cannot remain just block. So they're going to have to submit something if they're using anything that's block, correct?
You're going to have to start with...
As long as it says, like, maybe a concrete block, maybe it should say CMU concrete, which is, which is that really ugly land, eight inch by sixteen, right? Because we don't want to get that confused with red brick, or Obi, or burnt Obi.
Well, it's like the facing, the stone that they used up for retaining walls, you know, that's, that's a decorative block. And it has a cut face, or Ashler face on it. You see it around. And there's buildings in town that have that type of, of face on it. It's block, but it has an Ashler surface to it.
Another quick question under this section, since we're talking about block. And it, it goes into basically, kind of some retaining walls. Do we want to add in here Gabion baskets?
Yeah, I was on my list.
Oh, was it on your list? Sorry, Frank.
That's okay, let's bring it up. I agree, I think it, we have to put that in, because it's being used.
And there's some great work with it done so far.
Yep.
I was, I was just, well, actually, it's been a couple of years, but up at Areavipa Canyon East, near town of Klondike, some really, really, really ancient corral fences, the corners of those fences, they basically took, they took Gabion as a, as a cylinder, like this, filled it with rocks, and then had those fences stretched in each direction. It was just gorgeous. That'd be really cool to see people do that. And that's probably a hundred-year-old fences, so.
Right.
Uh, yeah. And it gives people an idea of stuff that looks, that looks great, what we, what we think looks great. Okay, so now to page thirteen, demolition. This is my, I think it's going to be my last comment. Third column, item number one, A, the structure is judged by the building inspector to be a hazard to public safety, com, and I would add, comma, that cannot otherwise be rectified. And this is just nudging this a little bit closer to the original founding of the DRB, and, you know, it's standing with National Parks Service guidelines. So the Parks Service guidelines, which give us the tax incentive, the state to save historic structures, is very specific about always trying to save a structure. So the one A, I would just add, instead of a period, add that cannot otherwise be rectified. And that, that brings it closer to the National Parks Service guidelines. It doesn't contradict, because in some cases, that, that one A sentence can, is directly contradicting National Parks Service guidelines.
Okay.
Just by, just by adding that thing, it's now totally in line with it. And it also still gives the power of hazard and public safety to the building inspector. So it, it doesn't take that power away at all. And then number, or one B, actually, before I jump, does anyone have comments on that?
I do have a, a quick comment on one D. I think B is a contradiction to the entire design review board, and also the guideline. Because what our intention and our goal is here, we're, we're after preservation of a, of a historical landmark. This is, that is why we are all here. And I think B is, I think, personally, I think B should be struck completely. I don't even think it should exist. I just think it undermines what we are trying to accomplish with the design review board.
I have to agree with Sean.
Yeah, I agree with you, Sean.
And that's kind of, I mean, we don't really want to get into... And that's kind of, I mean, we don't really want to get into that.
Right.
That's, that's fine.
Nope.
Yeah, and I do want to highlight that that was in the original guidelines. I think it's, it's really, having that in there has been really a thorn in our side, at least for me. And I, I would say, no, I'm not going to say anything else.
So, so the wording of one would just be simply if the, we would delete if any of the following, it would just be if the structure is judged by the building inspector to be a hazard, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it's a public safety that cannot otherwise be rectified.
Yeah, yeah. So just, we lose A and, we lose A as well. I mean, it gets blended into the first paragraph.
I mean, I think the intent of B was, was something like eminent domain. And in that case, that falls under a totally different category in which that the DRB does not have the power to boss around the city of Bisbee, though we would really love to, Teresa. But we can't, so.
You think I don't get bossed around?
I know, that's like, yeah, anyway, I was kidding, uh, kidding, not kidding. But yeah, so I think striking that out is just eliminates a lot of trouble.
Right, I agree.
Yes.
It's illegal, Matt.
Yep. Right. Anything else, Ben?
Uh, no. Oh, yes, yes, one, one more thing. Aesthetically speaking, and this is a point that I made on the previous iterations that seems some. The imagery that is in the original guidelines is almost entirely, aside from the handwritten illustrations, is historic photographs. Now, I know the building, when the City Hall burnt down, we lost a lot of, I don't know if we lost the original scan of these, but I would be willing to say that like, these photographs, whenever possible, they don't, they don't slow down the amount of time it takes for somebody to read the document. So I think if anything, they, they really inspire people and they give people ideas of what was Bisbee, what is the intent of the National Park Service? Is the intent of the designation? Why do tourists come to Bisbee? Why do people like me move to Bisbee? It's because of photographs like this, we pretend like we're, I don't know, pioneers or something. But, but you know, same goes with, with the sign photographs. I mean, this gives people inspiration and ideas and it doesn't slow down. So I think the, the Restoration Museum and also the Mining Museum, I'm, I'm positive they would be more than happy to to grant copyright for these images or similar images. Because it, it goes along with their mission statement as well too, both, both of those organizations. And they also have original scans. And I have a, I have a photographic scanner, we would be willing to do that, so. That's, that's my last comment, is getting those black and white images back in there.
That's good, I like that, that's a good idea. Because it keeps the flavor of it that we want to present, for sure. Now, I think...
Yeah, it's the whole mission.
Right, the only comment that I had that hasn't been touched on was stucco on page 26. And just to want to make clear that stucco is not to go over existing wood siding. You can use it on a new building and you can use it if it's existing on the building that you're working on. But we've had issues with people wanting to stucco over, and it's been done, over wood siding. And that loses the historic value of the building if you're covering up the wood with stucco, so.
A comment to that point, hey, Ben? How many Adobe, actual Adobe structures are still within Bisbee? Because I know sometimes to pervert, to preserve the old Adobe structures, you have to stucco. And I know that you know the process and that. Is that something that we need to...
It's actually plaster.
Is it a plaster?
There's a difference, yeah, stucco is, stucco at least to my knowledge is is Portland cement. And it's also a lot of times done with a machine that sprays it on the wall and then you trowel it. And then plaster is a lime base. And that's almost always done by hand. And that's, the lime plaster is what you do over Adobe. You can also do it over wood or other stuff.
But anyway, you wouldn't want to cover plaster or stucco over, over existing wood. Was my point just to reinforce that. Any other comments, anybody? We've run here about an hour and a half, so. I think probably the next thing to do is to get together again and see what the next iteration looks like before we send it on to planning and zoning.
Yep.
Should we make it an item on the agenda for?
I'd like to have a separate meeting like we did tonight rather than put it on to our regular meeting, I think. Because it's a long conversation. They're getting shorter, we're getting it fine, you know. But I think it'd be better for us to do it as a special session rather than to mix it into our regular meeting so we don't go on for too long. What do people feel about that?
Agreed.
I agree.
Agree.
Okay, so Teresa, when you get those things together, we'll do another one.
Yeah, well, I think Nina and I will at least be able to give you an idea of the time involved at your next regular meeting.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, I would move to adjourn.
Okay, second time.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, was Ben, was Ben the second?
Yeah, I guess. Sean.
Or the third, okay, all right, you guys can fight over it when you see the minutes.
Thanks for participating.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, have a good night, guys.
Bye-bye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bye.